All right, call to order the planning commission meeting for November 14th. If you'd join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, have you had a chance to look over the agenda? Any changes? The agenda?
Move for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And you had a chance to look at the minutes? Any changes or additions to the minutes?
No changes. Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that brings us to our public meetings. So the way the public meetings go, we'll have Sheri give the, the city planner give the report, and after that report is over, we will open it up for public comments. Please, if you have any public comments, direct your comments to the commission, and then we might refer your questions to somebody else, but start your questions with the commission, and then after the public comments, everybody's had a chance, we will close the public discussion, and then we will have our discussion. All right, Sheri?
All right, so this is our request from Nancy Son, who lives at 20205 Oxborough Lane. Is Nancy here? All right, thanks for coming. She is asking to do a minor subdivision to divide an existing 6.1 acre parcel to create a 4.1 acre lot and a 2 acre lot. The request is consistent with the goals and policies in our comprehensive plan. Residential uses in these sizes are allowed. It meets all of the density, lot size, and frontage standards. The two lots actually end up being in different quarter-quarter sections, so they meet the density standard within the city. There are accessory structures on the original lot, not on the new lot. Both of them would need to continue to comply with the accessory structure standards in the ordinance. They have completed their wetland delineation, and that was included in the materials they submitted to the city. They will need a location for a new septic system on the new lot, and they have already been through the county process, providing the information from their septic designer about the proposed location and soils, and the county staff sent a letter to the city saying that they would be approved for this, that this would meet the county standards in terms of the septic system. Any future development on parcel number two would need to meet the ordinance standards for lot coverage and for stormwater management. The watershed district had no comments on this, and said it will not require a watershed permit just to create the new parcel. The city engineer said a driveway permit will be needed. That would happen at the time of the building permit. So the only real question is the one on park dedication. She's really creating one new lot here. I looked on your park plan, in your current comprehensive plan, there is a park search area located to the west of parcel one, but it's across Oxborough Lane. It's to the west, and so I doubt that you would ask for dedication of land within lot two for park dedication. So the requirement would typically be then for the cash donation to meet the park dedication requirement. So the staff recommendation, because this really meets all the standards in your ordinance, is to approve a minor subdivision to create lots one and lot two, as shown on the plat, and there are some very standard conditions here about needing a building permit, getting other, any other required permits, including the septic system permit, the need to record the plat within a one year of approval of the subdivision. So nothing, nothing very unique.
All right, thank you. All right, we will open it up to public comments. Does anybody have any public comments they want to make in regards to this? Please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Jim.
Yes, please.
So I'm Leanne White. I'm representing Dale and Leanne White at 20127 Oxborough Avenue North. We just had a question to understand the quarter-by-quarter placement. I tried to get this information from the county, and I couldn't really get a clear picture of it. And the reason I'm asking the question, we just want to understand how with the, with the new home placement, if the Son was to have that property sold and a new home was built, how does that affect the density for the quarter-quarter that we reside in?
The remaining quarter-quarter?
And potential building that we would want to do, or subdivision that we would want to do. So it's not a statement of opposition, just a question for clarification.
Yeah, valid question. Yeah, for sure. Neil, do you have?
Do you have any quarter-quarters in front of you, so we can see if?
I can load them up fairly quickly.
So this is a requirement based on the metro council's requirements and limits on densities in communities like Scandia. And the Met Council limits densities to four units per 40 acres, which is determined based on the original quarter-quarter sections. So when someone comes in for a subdivision, one of the first things that Neil or Brendan do is look up the original quarter-quarter section on here, and see how many houses are already there.
It will be the pink lines are the quarter-quarter sections.
So how many are in that quarter? If they were to build this one?
Right now, you've got in this quarter-section, so they would be, there's two existing, and this would be the third. So which property are you referring to?
It would be the house just to right there.
There?
Yep.
Okay, so within that quarter-quarter section, you could get one more.
But somebody in that quarter could.
Subdivide and create one new lot.
Whoever gets it first.
Whoever what?
Whoever essentially gets to it first.
So either the house further to the, would be to the east, or our lot?
That would be difficult, because you couldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have frontage. The house further to the east?
How do they have access to, where do they have access to?
They have access to Oak Hill, coming back this way.
Okay.
So, I mean, realistically, you know, in that quarter-quarter section, your property is the only additional lot that could be carved out.
Or the one just to the south of the lot in question.
You probably with that house there, you wouldn't get enough?
No, straight above that.
To the north, right in between, still in the loop of Oxborough.
Here?
Just down.
Just go south.
South of that.
Right there.
I mean, because it's being done to the property to the north, so it could happen to that one too.
That lot, it looks like there's a separate lot there, actually.
I think that...
No, I, I know where his septic system is. And it's, it's not to the south. It's, you see where the black lines are for my property? Bradley, right where the arrow is, the pointer, go up, and a little bit to the left, that's where Bradley's septic system is.
Yeah.
So he's got, is that two parcels, though, right there?
This is one parcel.
And there's no house on that?
Yeah, there is a house.
There is a house? Okay. So there's already a house there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, I'm missing that vertical line between the two. I see.
Yeah. So that lot's split by the quarter-quarter section, and so I doubt you get the frontage where you could even split off.
I see what you're saying. Okay, I missed.
So the only, you know, possible lot within that quarter-quarter section would be something down in here.
Even if there's the house that we just referred to, Bradley's house is inside that 44, then there would be four houses.
So there'd be one, two, three now. That's what I'm saying, you could, there could be one more.
But she's saying the house we were just talking about with the septic system is that house.
Where is it?
Can you zoom into that or not?
Yeah, see, he's, he's inside 44, two or three.
Well, I know, you know, the way that, it's so dense, you can't see his house, and he's got his shop.
I think that's by design.
Oh, there it is. That's the house, and the shop is on the red line.
Oh, the shop's up there.
No, honey, I know that lot over there the other day.
Is this the shop?
Did you point it out? Yeah.
Here is his house, and his shop is there. And then he's got a detached garage in here someplace.
Which would make sense, because it's an Oxborough address, so the accessory structure is behind the house.
Okay.
So his house is in the westernmost quarter-section.
Okay, okay. So, so he's not in that 40?
So technically, since the building is not the main structure?
He can't split that.
He couldn't split it unless he got rid of the accessory building.
And he also is considered to be part of 43, not 44, since his main structure is 43.
Yep, since his house is in 43.
How many houses are in 43 right now? Just out of curiosity.
And that may have been part of the subdivision, the way it was approved, or whenever.
One, two, three, four, five, six?
There's more than four.
Yeah, it looks like six, or that's probably seven.
Yeah.
So how do we handle that when that's already existing?
Well, we just...
To prevent someone from doing that for new?
We mostly deal with things going forward. Not, we can't go make people tear down their houses, so, you know.
No, of course you can't, but if you allow it in one area?
A lot of that was probably allowed under prior county zoning, so the current zoning is what applies.
All right, well, that's what we needed to know was, do you?
So you still have the opportunity to do one more?
But two, before this would be approved?
No, you could, after this is approved, you can still create one additional lot.
But if this wasn't approved, we would be able to do two?
Correct, I'm sorry.
How big is your parcel?
20 acres.
You could probably own, let's see?
Yeah, sure, she could.
Do two 5 acre lots and one 10?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to show, thank you.
All right, any other public comments?
Because this is in the general rule, right?
Right.
All right, we will close the public portion of the hearing and open the discussion to the commission. Any thoughts, comments? You were thinking something to us?
The variance, as you know, explained at Sheri.
There's no variance.
Sorry, sorry, the subdivision, as you explained, it seems pretty simple. I now see that quarter-quarter split, and it makes things kind of hairy.
It is, it's the why we always look at it first.
I can see why, if I was an adjacent homeowner, I'd maybe be questioning that.
But it does meet the requirements, in other words, not like any?
Right.
Right. If the city wanted to change that, you would have to be working within that council to get your community classification changed at a regional level.
Yeah.
Right.
It would take some work.
Which, yeah. All right, any comments, Tom?
Oh, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right, we have a motion?
Yeah. Move to approve resolution number 11141701.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So that will get sent to the council for approval at their next meeting, which is, is that next week?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, yeah, next Tuesday, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that brings us to the application for the variance on the setback on Langley Court.
Yep, this one's a little more complicated, like our lake ones always are. This is a request from Michael Lalman, who is the builder of a new house on 18605 Langley Court North. The owners are Bob and Jane Marching. Or is someone here from that group of folks?
There she is.
Jane, I'm with you.
Hello. Good evening.
Thanks for coming. This is in the general rural district and the shoreline overlay district of Big Marine Lake. And so they are proposing to build a new home, which is pictured here on a site of a parcel where there's an existing home. There were three parcels here, three little tiny parcels, that have all been combined into one parcel. The new home is very close to the lake. In fact, it's within the shore impact zone.
The current home, you mean?
The current home, yep. So this one is proposed to be outside of that 50-foot shore impact zone. This is the proposed new house. And as we were talking about a little bit ago, what we've encouraged them to do is push it as far back from the lake as possible to be, have everything outside that shore impact zone, which means they need still a variance from the 100-foot setback, because they can't make that. Then they also need a variance from the rear setback, because they're closer than 40 feet on that side. Another positive of this one is that they can meet the setback from the north property boundary. The current house does not. It's only five feet from that boundary. This, the new one would meet the setback requirement there. They have a more difficult situation than a lot of people would, because along the south boundary of their parcel, there is also lake shore and a wetland. So this, they are also needing a variance from the shoreline ordinary high water setback and wetland setback on that south side of their property, as well as on the lake side. So this was a complicated one. But in terms of the comp plan, because the comp plan wants us as much as possible to protect the values of the lake, the fact that they are moving this, the existing house away, and the new house is outside the shore impact zone, it is pushed as far back as possible in order to do that. Helps conform better with the spirit and intent of the comp plan to try to protect the lake as much as possible. So on page three of the ordinance, you can see all the setback standard requirements. There are four of them related to the structure setback from the ordinary high on the south side and on the east side, the setback from a wetland of 52 feet, the building setback from the roadway of about 25 and a half feet, and the septic system setback from the right-of-way about 20 feet. There are two existing accessory structures, which you can see close to the south boundary. Those are proposed to be removed, and so that helps with the impervious coverage. This, the proposed house with the driveway and all is right at the 25% that we permit. So the, those structures need to be removed in order to be within that requirement. They're on the 201 system. They'll have to hook up with the new system. The engineer made some comments about that, that they'll need to anticipate replacing the service pipe from the tanks to the new house. And then they'll need an approval for the new well from the state department of health, as well as the city's approvals for the hookup to the bliss system. The engineer put one item in for your discussion, and this is a thing for you to talk about. There is not a requirement in the shoreline ordinance that limits their ability to cut trees in order to construct the house. We don't, in the shoreline ordinance, require them to do any kind of a buffer. The engineer suggested that you think about whether some kind of buffer, vegetated buffer should be required along the south property boundary for a little separation from the wetland or not. We haven't typically required that, but it's something you guys could consider. The watershed district will require them to do a buffer along that south property line as a part of their watershed permit. So you could also choose to just leave that up to the watershed district permit requirement. The engineer also commented that there's an existing fence within the right-of-way, and he's recommending removing the fence and locating it so that it, if it wants to be put back, to be put back so that it meets the required setbacks. The engineer also requested a more detailed grading and a road control plan to be approved to make sure there's not going to be intrusion into that shoreline setback, and to be careful about how the water works in terms of surrounding properties. The watershed district sent us a comment letter. They said they are in favor of granting this, largely because it will get that house further back from the lake than the existing house. We didn't get any comments from the DNR on this. So in terms of the criteria we look at for granting a variance and the findings for those, the first is that because of the fact that we're, the new house would be further back than the existing house, and in fact, placed as far back as it can be and outside the shore impact zone, this is more in harmony with the comp plan and the intent of the controls than the existing house. This is a permitted use in this district, so it meets the second requirement, that it be a reasonable use. The practical difficulties are rated, related to the size and configuration of the parcel that make it almost impossible to build a house there without a variance, and also the fact that they've got the ordinary high water line on two sides and a, and a wetland, which are the physical factors that really complicate putting a house on this parcel and make it impossible to do it without some kind of variance. This will not affect air and light to adjacent properties or increased congestion on streets. They're simply replacing an existing house with a new house. This requested variance is the minimum action in order to eliminate those practical difficulties related to all the physical issues of the site to put, in order to put a house on the site, and there's no issue related to solar energy systems here. So the staff recommendation is to approve the variance, to construct the new single-family home in the location that is shown on this plan, with a number of conditions, as recommended by the city engineer, that they need to get permits, that they need to do a more detailed grading plan. The one I forgot to bring forward from the report is one that says the applicant shall remove the existing accessory structures prior to approval of the building permit. So make that, I made it number four, but add that condition in that they have to remove those accessory structures. But otherwise, recommending approval with those conditions.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay, and we'll open it up to public for comment. Does anybody have any comments? Would you guys like to say anything, or anybody else?
I came with the intent of saying a lot, but Sheri, thank you. You covered everything, for the most part, and I guess just a point of...
Come forward and state your name and, I guess, the address of the...
Even though the address isn't local?
Sure.
Brandon Babcock, I'm with Michael Paul Design Build, the builder, proposed builder for this site. Address is 2900 Plymouth Road in Minnetoka. And as, as we discussed during the site visit on Sunday, which was addressed here during the report, I guess I'd like a little further clarification as to the requirement on the septic, knowing that we obviously won't be able to meet exact requirements for that, but it sounds like, as part of the report has already been suggested, that's in issue, and a compromise has certainly already been addressed and whatnot, so...
For which one?
For the septic setback.
For the septic itself.
For the setback?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, as long as you meet, the county requirement is at least 10 feet from the parcel boundary, and they wouldn't let you get any closer than that. It's very hard to get a variance for that location from the county. But we have frequently granted...
It's 10 feet from the structure, not the parcel boundary?
What is there, I thought theirs was also 10 feet from the parcel boundary.
That's what it says here. Sewer tank setback, parcel boundary is 10 feet.
As close as 10 feet.
Yeah, 10 feet from property line.
Yeah, so, so we'll let you get that close. The county won't let you get any closer.
Okay.
But we, we will, in order to keep you further back from the lake.
So 10 feet from the structure and 10 feet from the parcel, even if that 10 feet from the structure brings us inside?
The right-of-way. The right-of-way.
The wetland.
The right-of-way. I, I guess I was more concerned, as I looked to the south there, with the ordinary hot water line. You know, if we're pushing that 50 foot already, if we're 10 feet from the structure, can that be 40 foot from that? And I'm kind of thinking, because from a practical standpoint, I'm thinking placement is going to be somewhere in this area for the tanks.
Can I interfere with your well?
Well is proposed, I think, right up in this area.
So it's got to be 60 feet from that?
60 feet from that.
50.
Oh, 50, 50, 50, sorry.
So...
So the existing tanks are where right now?
The existing tanks are probably right up by this set of trees. And unfortunately, those tanks are only a couple of years old, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So as we go to the new one, I think part of the house is going to cover that.
Oh.
Right on the edge of those lots.
To be close.
So he's talking about adding in a request in this that would involve the ordinary high watermark from that, from that wetland?
Yeah, and I, as long as it's a tank situation, my guess is that we'd allow that variance from the wetland setback for a tank situation.
And the discussion that we kind of had while we were out there was like, that do they need to resubmit this with that information on there?
No, let's just do it now.
Okay.
So we'll, we would let you get it. How far, how close do you need to be to that wetland?
Well, I don't specifically need to be, I, I need to be where you tell me to be, actually.
What power you all have? Where's your proposed location? Where's your...
That, I think that was the issue, is I don't think there was a proposed location on this map. So we were kind of like, well, where are you going to put the septic tank?
I think the primary distance is the distance from the well, right?
And the distance from the wetland, though.
The distance from the structure and from the well would be the primary issues here.
And the 10 feet from the parcel boundary.
Parcel boundary.
Right, so start...
So I, you know, you could probably, given that that's probably not a very high-quality wetland there, you could probably be within 30 feet. We could say, you could have a variance to be no closer than 30 feet to that wetland.
And again, that's just...
Yeah, I wonder about the distance from the parcel boundary, particularly on the street side, because, you know, they're the city's tanks.
Yeah.
You know, the city needs to maintain them. So realistically, I mean, the closer to the front property line in the street, you know, probably the better. I don't know, you, you know, Chris, you're on the wastewater committee, you know, but it just makes sense to me that if you move something further away, it's just harder to service, you know, for us.
Yeah, okay.
So it, you know, I think the only thing will be whether the county would be okay with that, and that's, I don't know what, I know with septic fields, they don't want them any closer than 10 feet. Maybe the tank is up to you.
I think, yeah, the tank, it would surprise me if it wouldn't be up to us.
Probably.
Just because it's, you know, it's a sewer system.
So if you want to...
Just down the road, you're for that?
Yeah, I think so.
Next to right-of-way?
Yep.
Within 10 feet?
Yeah.
I think it's on the right-of-way line. I think it's on the parcel bound, well, does the parcel boundary go to the, to, because sometimes the parcel boundaries go halfway across the road.
No, we're talking about the right-of-way line, yeah.
Yeah, this is the right-of-way line.
Well, but the, but the, but this says the septic, the minimum sewage septic tank back is, is, from the parcel boundary is 10 feet.
Right.
Which is the same, one and the same here.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we're, I think we're letting him have the septic tank no closer than 30 feet to the, to that wetland. Do you want to say?
I guess if there was a scale...
Zero feet from the parcel boundary? Five feet?
Five sounds good.
That, well, the other one, the one, guy next door is right on the parcel boundary, isn't he?
But he had less room than this one.
Yeah, well, that's certainly true, yeah.
Do you think you could do it five feet from the parcel boundary, or do you not know at this point?
Where's the scale on here? Because that would just tell.
Yeah, yeah.
It's down at the bottom?
If we do, it's bottom, kind of on the left half for the bottom.
There you go.
There it is.
The signature. Let's see, if we did...
You get an idea.
If we do five feet in the parcel, we're still focused on 10 feet from structure.
Yep.
Okay. So we'd have to come off that corner.
We'd have to be down in here someplace.
You have to wait? No, but that's right next to the well.
Oh, that's right.
So you have to start with a well, and you move south from the well.
Or move the well.
Can you put the well at the other end of the house?
So move the well north.
I think you're going to have to, because you're pigeonholing yourself. If you do 30 feet off the wetland, and if you even say zero, it doesn't matter, zero or 10 feet off the property line, and 10 feet from the house, you have a 20-foot area, you can put that thing, and the well's got to go 60 feet from that, or 50 feet.
So they can just put the well wherever they want? Just don't put it there?
Well can't just go, can't go there. Move it north.
But the, there aren't...
Put it right in the middle of the driveway.
No.
Big man will cover it.
Yeah, big man will cover it in the middle.
So...
So we move the well north and focused on the septic coming off this corner here, at least 30 feet this way, five feet from this, 10 feet from that corner, somewhere in that area.
Yeah, that, that basically is going to draw your dotted line of where you...
Right there, and then go 60 feet this way for the well.
The well?
50.
50, yeah, 50, yeah.
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 Okay, I can work with that.
Okay, we'll add that into the variance, then, the 50 feet from the wetland and five feet, no closer than five feet in your right-of-way.
Okay.
That might give you a very small box to work the thing. That might give you a very small box to work the thing.
How big are the tanks?
Yeah, that's a good point, whether, you know, depending on the size of the tanks, I think.
Yeah.
Sure, and the trees got to go out there, too.
No, you have to work within the trees, too.
No, you can take trees out if needed for construction.
No. Are you kidding me? Every tree you take out, you have to replace with six, and a half.
All right, all right.
Those trees in front are more than 100 feet, 100-foot line.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, come on up and state your name and address, please.
I'm Jane Marching, good evening.
Good evening. Address?
Just, um...
Address?
My current address, um, 5671 57th Street, Circle North, Lake Amo.
Perfect.
Just mentioning the trees, I had questions, we have quite a few cottonwood trees on the property, and they're not doing anybody any good, including my neighbors that have continually complained about the cottonwood coming over into their screens and whatnot. Are we able to take down those trees that aren't...
Technically, with, if it's within 100 feet of the lake, and if the trees are over a six-inch diameter, about four feet above, four and a half feet above the ground, you would need to give the city a little plan showing which ones you wanted to take out. The city could require that you put some new trees there.
Okay, and we are absolutely fine with putting in trees that are, you know, just the size, nice, I think that's what we prefer.
And that would be more of a staff thing, it doesn't have to come back through this group, but technically, within this ordinance, if you're cutting something bigger than six inches, that's still within that 100 feet from the lake, you have to provide at least a little sketch plan of that to Neil that shows which ones and how many, and then he can give you some thoughts back about the number.
In terms of replacement, right? If that cottonwood seeds, make sure you pull it out right away, because next year it'll be six inches around. Those things real fast.
Yeah, they're not going to deal with.
They're close to your house, you're going to find them up against your old foundation, too.
I know, I know, we have one of those helicopter trees, too, and unfortunately, that looks like something that won't be, we won't be looking rid of either. And just a question, with the setbacks that we're discussing, so we're looking approximately about 52 feet from the lake to the patio, and I'm wondering if there's a little given there. I, we're kind of refiguring the patios where there's going to be more behind the garage, so I don't really see that it will be an issue, but, but I just wanted to get a smaller patio up in this area, and I didn't know if we could do, look at more of 50 foot on...
The minimum is 50 feet.
Okay, so we're already saying 50 feet, and we're okay?
You cannot disturb within 50 feet of the lake.
Okay, because I only, I saw that we have 52 here, but we're fine if it's 50.
50.
Okay.
And as long as they're not having to do a lot of grading, so that it's going to make a difference in that 50-foot area.
Okay, got it, got it.
That's kind of the not-touch zone.
Okay, and just from a homeowner's perspective, and not, and thinking about my neighbors, they were excited to hear that we were going to be moving out there full-time, and, and they were very excited because they thought we could get our house away from their house. But we're not, with the 10 feet, that's not doing us a whole lot. I, I was, I only want to ask if we could do maybe a couple more feet on the south side, and of course, we'll continue to meet the 50 foot from the lake, it would just give us a little more room between our neighbors, I think it will be better for, you know, their, their...
The problem for you is that the structure line right now is only about 50 feet from the ordinary high that runs along the south boundary, and you have to be at least 50 feet from that line.
Okay, there's no, nothing that can be a couple feet or whatever.
The shore impact zone is an absolute, it's a VNR requirement, as well as a city requirement, that there be no disturbance within that 50 feet.
I see, okay.
So you guys are right at 50 feet right now?
Yeah, they are right now.
At exactly 50.03, which is approximately...
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Four inches.
If there's nothing we can do with that, then...
Yeah, it's just, that's kind of the, the, like, line in the sand, I guess, in shoreline, the 50 feet is kind of the line in the sand.
Okay.
Smaller house.
Yeah, I know, well, it's a smaller house, it's just a huge garage, a lady's garage. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Other comments?
Yes, I just, just to clarify Sheri's comment about the tree removal and providing that plan, is that in, is that specific to the trees we have to disturb with this new build?
No, you can do that...
Or is it just above and beyond?
It's whatever is above and beyond. You can remove trees as needed to construct the house.
The structure itself.
And those don't need replacement, but if someone goes beyond that, it...
That's one of the five and a half.
Right, exactly.
Or whatever Neil decides, really will be up to him at that point, but...
Okay, so that can be part of a landscape.
It's really within that 100 feet.
So that could be part of a landscape plan, and you'll have to do, probably the watershed district will make you look at some kind of buffer along that south side, they've already said that. So as you put that plan together, you could also put the plan for the tree removal together and run that by Neil.
Simultaneously, okay.
May I step up again? What, what do you mean by buffer, what are you, are you talking, some kind of a landscaping?
Yeah, and that'll be, that's a watershed rule, I guess is they require some kind of native shrubs or trees or grasses.
Okay, because it's very grassy now before it gets down to the ditch.
And if what's there is, is good and holding things, what it might be is just a plan to keep that and not disturb it.
Okay.
Rather than, that you have to replant it.
I would love to put some natural flowers or whatnot in there, I would like to dress it up anyhow, so.
Yeah, but that's a watershed thing, but my guess is if there's something good there now, they'll let, they'll just make that a part of, do not take us away.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll close the public discussion and open it to the commission.
You said you added the removal of the two structures prior...
Yeah.
Removal of the two sheds prior to construction.
To getting a permit, yeah.
As a new, as a condition that was in the staff report, but I forgot to bring it forward.
By a shed?
And that's understood? Okay, that's the only thing I...
And then the single-family dwelling, a minimum of 50 feet from the ordinary high level to the south, and I think we'd say 50 feet to the east then, from what you just said, 52 feet from the wetland, 11 feet from the road right-of-way, a septic system to be five feet from the road right-of-way, and 30 feet from the wetland to the south.
I have a question on the impact zone, so basically, the impact zone is your entire front yard, is that right?
Yeah.
So you could not, if you got a low spot in there, you couldn't, you can't fill there, is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that's probably what the rule means, it's no grading, so...
You get a depression and water fills there, and you want to get rid of that.
Well, in terms of grading, though, I mean, there are limits in terms of either yards or square feet.
Yeah.
50 yards is a lot of material, is, was it 50 yards or 10,000 square feet?
A thousand square feet.
Okay.
So in other words, you can, you can fill in there, is that correct?
Some, not all. You could.
You could do a little.
You could do a little.
If you really weren't changing the grades, you know, I mean, you're an engineer, you sort of, I mean, if you have, are you thinking of an area that's 50 by 50 that you wanted to fill in a little bit or something?
No, probably more, even smaller than that, that was...
A sunken tree?
A sunken hole in water.
Yeah.
And you want to get rid of that thing so you could maintain it as long.
Yeah, I think you could do that, but you can start bringing in a back hole and changing the, you know, the grade of the whole front area there.
Yeah, it's land alteration grading of 50 cubic yards or more, and/or disturbance of land of 1,000 square feet or more would require a permit.
So if it's less than 1,000 feet, they can change it?
Yes.
Okay. Less than 1,000 square, square feet?
Or 50 cubic yards.
Or 50 cubic yards.
Can I make a motion? Yeah, the discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 11141702.
With the, with the changes just made.
Right, yep, with the, with the recent amendments.
And staff recommendations.
Right, including the new one with the sheds.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, so that will go to the council next Tuesday, and they'll make their final decision then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and that brings us to the application for the IUP for the commercial kennel at 2177 Manning Trail.
All right.
Sheri?
This is our request from Patricia Nielsen Wilkie, are you there? Hello? To have an interim use permit for a commercial kennel at her property at 2177 Manning Trail North. This is in the general rural district, and in the shoreline overlay district of German Lake, and this is a sketch that Patricia did to show us the elements for her property. The house is on the left-hand side, there's a fenced area where the dogs would run, they live in the house most of the time, but they have a fenced area for running outside. The well, you can see at the end of the line, sort of south of the house there, it's about 50 feet from the corner of the house, and then you can see the dotted line is, is that the lake line?
High water.
High water.
150 feet from high water.
That's 100, that's 150 feet from the high water.
High water, okay, I can't see it.
Me neither.
This is actually traced off of the survey of the house.
All right, so Patricia has Shetland sheepdogs, they're mainly pets, she's had the dogs for 50 years, occasionally breeds them, does some showing, does some occasional selling of the animals, and therefore she needs a commercial kennel permit. Private kennels are where the, all the animals are pets and you don't do any breeding or boarding, because she does a little bit of breeding, this would cross the line to commercial kennels. She had 35 dogs at the time of the application, there are about 37 now based on the visit from the vet and from our deputy. She is requesting up to 40 dogs, plus the potential for up to two litters a year, although she said in her application she does not breed every year, not have two litters every year. In order to take a look at this and have an idea of what conditions we should have, we requested that a local veterinarian, as well as the sheriff's deputy, visit the site and complete a report about the conditions. We did this for the last kennel, too, the same process of having a couple of people who are more expert take a look at it. Those two people completed separate site visits around October 20th. They use the criteria that the Minnesota Board of Animal Health uses for inspections at commercial dog or cat kennels. This kennel does not meet the requirement for a state license, but they use the same forms that the state board of animal health would use to take a look at this facility. If you read Dr. Randall's report, he said he's been caring for her pets for over 10 years, he believes that they're receiving appropriate care, that they're in good condition, and there's no evidence of neglect or abuse. The standards that we need to look at for a commercial kennel is that the lot size needs to be 10 acres, this one is quite close to that, and there's a process called an administrative exception that allows this to be considered a 10-acre parcel. Sometimes when, through surveys, there are a little bit of loss due to road right-of-way, what was originally a 10-acre parcel falls a little bit below, that's why we have that allowance in the ordinance, and so she has applied for and received that exception, so we can consider this a 10-acre parcel. It also needs to meet some of the other criteria in the code for kennels, which we'll go through. Lot size requirement is met, the setbacks are all met in terms of the, the house where the animals are, as well as the fenced yard, she meets all the setback requirements. The kennel ordinance requires a septic, separate septic system for commercial kennels, but that is based on the notion that there's a separate building that is part of the kennel, and the code allows an exception, for example, for veterinarian facilities where the housing of the animals is within the primary structure on the property. So that was the situation with the booth kennel, and that is also the situation with her kennel, the animals are housed primarily in the house, their waste is disposed of through the normal waste, commercial waste disposal system, other than whatever is generated in the yard, and so what we've done for this one is similar to the booth one, to have the requirement be that she needs to dispose of any of the animal waste in a way that's appropriate through her normal commercial process and through the waste digester that she has on her property that deals with some of the outdoor waste. The maximum number of dogs, because she's got 37 now, and the experts that visited the property said they're in fine shape and being well cared for, the staff have recommended the 40 dogs that she requested, along with two litters of puppies a year as a max. Generally, this fits the comp plan criteria for this, and the criteria for an interim use permit. The period of the permit would be that the use would terminate with a change in ownership, which we've required for the other kennels, because it's really important that this be a responsible person who's had the site looked at when we grant the permit, or if she ceases to have the animals or board and breed them for more than a year, then the interim use permit could go away. The evaluation criteria for a conditional use permit are that this must be consistent with the comp plan, which is, is we allow this use in this zoning district based on the comp plan. The use should not have negative effects on the health, safety, morals, conduct, and welfare of the community, and so you'll see a number of conditions proposed for how the animals should be kept, for the fact that she needs to comply with the noise ordinance and the animal ordinance of the community to manage any barking, just some general criteria so that there are not impacts on neighbors from the use. And the staff thought is that if she complies with those conditions, then there will not be negative effects to the surrounding properties or to their potential development. There are adequate public services available for this use, it doesn't need any new infrastructure, it can conform to the regulations of the zoning district with the conditions that are proposed, and to those general and specific standards. So staff are proposing to grant the interim use permit for the condition, for the commercial kennel, with the conditions you see on page eight and nine, related to how the waste is handled on the property, to managing the dog behavior and the care of the dogs, for the, that the interim use permit would expire if the ownership changes, and that if, if the city wishes to inspect the kennel, it can do so with notice to the owner.
Okay, thank you. All right, that will open up the public discussion portion, does anybody have any comments they would like to make? Patricia, yeah?
I could comment that...
Come, come up and, and let us know your name and address, please.
Nielsen Wilkie, 21775 Manning Trail North, that was wrong somewhere.
Oh.
I wanted to comment that I've bred for 25 years now, and I have an average of .56 litters per year, it's not a big breeding operation or public model or anything like that. I mainly breed for my own interest, and extra dogs get sold, so I'm not generating, I, I have an average of 1.8 puppies per year, so I don't have very large litters, and I don't breed every year, so, I'm mainly into breeding and showing, and I'm a geneticist, so I'm interested in improving the breeding.
Okay.
I show them an agility and conformation, and I did show them agility.
Okay.
I've got over 75 rosettes on 18 dogs that I've shown, it's a big hobby.
Okay.
Great dogs, they're all obedience trained, which is why I can have this many dogs, they all know basic obedience comes to stay, you know, that sort of thing, but the ones training agility have been trained for many, many hours and are working in the top classes. And I have probably five that I've trained in agility.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How many dogs is average for somebody that shows, like... How many dogs is average for somebody that shows like, I mean, is five typical or eighty typical? Somebody like yourself?
I, that would be really hard for me to say. I don't know enough.
When you go to competitions, I mean, how many dogs do folks like that?
How many dogs would there be that somebody would show?
How many dogs, people you're competing against, how many dogs would they have there?
I don't know. I mean, a lot of people have outdoor kennels with runs and I don't want that.
Sure.
I just want my dogs to live in the house with me.
Right.
So anything from a huge kennel with a lot of
Runs and stuff.
Structure, runs and concrete and stuff, I don't want.
Sure.
And then there might be people competing in agility that might only have two dogs.
Two dogs, sure.
Yeah, and pets.
Sure.
Most of mine, I consider my pets as well as my dogs for showing and breeding as well.
Okay.
Then I've got a large number of old dogs. I would say half of them are too old to breed. They range from a year and a half to about fifteen and a half is my oldest one. The oldest dog I've ever had was sixteen years, two months. So the fifteen-year-old is probably not going to be around for a lot longer.
Sure.
We have a kennel in Stillwater Township. It's more of a boarding operation and they're allowed up to fifty dogs. It's a little different situation from yours, but it's the one other kennel that I know about that's kind of, but they have a separate outdoor building. It is a really different setup. They have a whole separate septic system and a separate building for the animals and stuff.
Sure.
And they're not pets that are trained.
They're not really pets.
They're bored.
They have their own pets, but more, it's more of a boarding kind of operation.
Sure.
Where I don't board any dogs and I don't do rescue and, you know, these are dogs I've bred. And a lot of them I will probably only breed once and then put them in pet homes.
Put them in pet homes?
Other people who keep them as pets.
Other people want them for a pet.
Got it.
That don't want to buy a puppy.
Got it.
There are many people, surprisingly, there are many people that don't want to buy an eight-week-old puppy and have to go through a house training and manners and all that.
Sure.
They're happy to buy a two-year-old dog from me and have an already well-mannered pet.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention is my vet has actually been my vet for over twenty years now.
Twenty? Okay. He said his note.
I know.
He probably wasn't sure, so he wrote ten because he was sure.
That's his electronic medical records. I have his paper records that are older than that. So I actually can verify that he's been my vet since he took over from Willie Carlson there on ninety-seven, so.
Nice. All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Any comments from a visit?
I could comment on it if you want me to.
Sure.
Sure. Well, you can go ahead. You go ahead and then maybe Brandon can share afterwards.
Loretta Larson, 21980 Manning Trail, just a little north. I did not even know the dogs were there. You know, we don't hear them. So I have absolutely no objection to having this happen.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brandon?
So I've been dealing with this for about a year plus. It was given to me by complaint. I went out there the first time and the condition was severely worse from when I actually went out there and did my site visit. So she did clean the property up quite a bit for the internal conditions. I can't really state or speak on too much because I'm not a professional. I went off a state checklist. I don't have any further training in this. But even talking to her, it's a commercial kennel permit. I did talk to her. She gave a dog away two and a half years ago. She hasn't sold a dog in seven years. So her last litter was two and a half years ago prior. She hasn't competed at all this year. So I see the kennel more, I don't see it as a kennel. I see it more as just someone with a lot of pets. So I urge you to look into that before issuing this. I did have a concern about how long the dogs were in kennels. They're, they weren't, it's actually not a kennel. They're on, there's twenty-three different crates. So that was really concerning as well for how many hours these dogs are in crates. But then again, I would also express Keith wasn't able to make it today. He's the, he mean, animal humane investigator. Before pushing this onto council, I would make a condition that Keith goes out there and actually looks at the condition of these animals because he, and I'm not saying anything about the condition of the animals. I didn't have any issues with food and water, anything like that. But I would say before this gets pushed onto council to set up a state and a site visit with Keith so he can go out there and then push recommendations to you guys to be able to look at that properly because he does this every day, so.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation. I can't, it would just be more of an opinion than anything and I can't do that, so.
Sure.
But those were the concerning factors that I have.
Okay.
You've talked about the, about the animal control. Wasn't the vet visit the substitute for that?
Right, yes. The vet visit and then also Brandon using the checklist that the state would use.
Yeah.
So observationally, I think the other thing just to supplement what Brandon said, I mean, even though she has not, you know, sold a large number, it's not like a real, you know, commercial operation. Also, in that same classification, a private kennel, which would mean if you're keeping four or more dogs and not selling them, still requires an interim use permit.
Right.
So it's, you know, whether she sells them or not with that number of dogs is really not relevant.
Right. This just lets her, if she wants to, to do the occasional sale and to do the training kinds of stuff. It makes it, gives her the potential to do something a little more than have them as pets.
Okay. Okay, all right, thanks, Brandon. Any other public comments? Okay, I'll close the public discussion. And I actually have a question for you, if you wouldn't mind coming back up to the podium.
I'd also like to make a comment after your question.
Well, my question is, as you remember at the site visit, I did ask about the kennels and why there were some in kennels. And you mentioned that that's due to they chew on stuff and don't, they're not quite house-trained or something like that.
Well, they're house-trained, but if I'm not there, I don't necessarily trust them.
Okay, sure. So, so could you comment on the length of time that the dogs are in the kennel or in the, in the little cages and that kind of thing?
They're all in adequate size according to my vet.
Okay.
I looked at all of them. And they're there while I'm sleeping and when I'm at work.
Okay.
And then when they're outside, they're obviously not there. They're out in the house with me when I'm home.
Okay.
And then there's the ones that are trustworthy totally or all the time, have full run of the rest of the house.
Okay.
But did that answer?
Yeah, so you're saying that the ones that are kept in the cages for portions of time are in there while you're at work?
And when I'm sleeping.
And when you're sleeping?
Right. And they can get in there.
Okay, okay. And then otherwise they are let out in the house and then out also outside in the fenced area?
Right, right.
Okay.
They're mainly out except when I'm sleeping.
Okay. Could you give like an estimate of the amount of time that they're out during the day?
Be outdoors?
Well, outdoors and out in the house, this kind of combination.
Well, they're probably, well, it depends on the weather, how long they're outdoors.
Sure.
I mean, sometimes on a Saturday or Sunday, they can be out.
They're out all day?
In and out. I have a dog door.
Okay.
I don't want those in-and-out dog doors. It's not there in the winter because it's very poor in terms of insulation.
Sure.
If it's good weather, they can be out for four hours if they want to.
Okay.
I mean, I'm kind of an open door, in-and-out person. If they act like they want to come in, I'll let, I open the door a little minute.
Okay.
They're not, they go out. So they're in and out at will pretty much.
Okay.
When I'm home.
Okay.
Otherwise, if I'm vacuuming, I put them in there.
Okay.
Because I have a tack vacuum cleaner.
Okay. I know about that. Okay, and then you had a comment that you wanted to?
Yeah, I wanted to comment about this person from Animal, the Animal Humane Society. The original complaint, I think, was by the assessor, as best I can tell. And I'm fairly certain of that after talking to the neighbors. I had sheep years ago and the neighbors thought that I still had sheep. And so this person from the Animal Humane Society thought that I had sheep living in my basement. And he actually was very, he attacked me immediately when I returned his phone call and he was extremely abusive to me for about six minutes on the phone about my sheep, which I don't even have anymore. And he just would not believe that there were no sheep living in my basement. So I was very wary of him coming onto my property at all. I immediately called Officer Yeder, who had left his car. After I got home, I called him after I was at work and I got his voicemail. So I called him immediately figuring, oh, this will be a quick call, you know, I don't have any sheep anymore. And he just would not believe that. He really was attacking me. I was very upset and felt very abused by him. And so I was wishing that there could be some other person that would stand in his behalf. There is another animal control person that actually is two miles, his turf starts two miles from where my house is. And I would, I would rather have him be the person that does an inspection rather than dealing with this person that was so abusive to me.
Was this interaction since the visit?
He's never, I've never met him face-to-face.
But this phone conversation was after Yeder's visit to your house?
Yeah, he and Officer Yeder came to my house.
Got it.
But I was not home, I was at work.
Got it, I see what you're saying, I see.
And I got a voicemail from him saying he wanted to talk to me about my sheep. And I thought, well, this is easy, I'll tell him I don't have sheep anymore. And he just was determined that I had sheep and there's clearly a pasture there with no animals living in it because it's all grown up. And he was sure they must be living in my basement. And I was just like, you know how ridiculous that is?
That was, that was why we turned to having the vet, the vet come and do the visit.
Got it.
Did he report any sheep in the basement?
He did not say anything about sheep. There are one or two cats, right?
There are two cats.
I saw one.
And they, they won't, I mean, you're lucky to see one cat. They don't come out. And they have a perch that's high above where the dogs can't bother them. And they have a gate so they can get down to the kitty litter and the dogs can't get down there. So the cats get along okay with the dogs, but they have their own stables, yeah. And their food is up where the dogs can't get to it, of course. Otherwise they have fat dogs. So.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify. I actually asked the vet to come and do an inspection as an additional piece of information because I thought that this person from the Animal Humane Society was coming
Okay.
when Officer Yeder came to inspect.
Thank you. All right, you guys have any thoughts in your discussion items? Tom and I were there and I thought it was fairly clean. There were many dogs loose. There were also many dogs in cages. As the officer noted, they all looked to be in good health as far as I could tell. Obviously not an expert. That's my comment about the site visit. There's a lot of them, but they're, they're all happy and healthy as far as I could tell. Do you agree with that, Tom?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
The only two comments that I have is revolver on inspections. And one, is there continuous inspections for any permitting like this for kennels? Annual?
It's only if...
It'd be on complaint.
Yeah, if we got a complaint. We've left an option in here that the city may inspect the kennel annually to evaluate compliance.
Right, I read that. So who from, or who from the city would?
Probably would be Brandon with the checklist, the same checklist that's used by the state animal health, state, what is it, animal health board?
So if Brandon's most recent visit with the checklist resulted in a request that, a recommendation that somebody else goes to visit, is that the best?
I mean, you know, if going through his checklist, if he saw something that was untoward, you know, he would, you know, you know, provided that we have that inspection right, I mean, he could actually, you know, he could ask for other assistance.
We could ask the vet to come back or?
That's kind of what he's asking though, when Brandon did ask for that, so.
So also, I work in construction, which is not a dog kennel. But I do do routine audits of job sites as a safety professional and I know what people do when they know that I'm coming around. So just by nature, I mean, I would assume if I had company coming over, I would clean my house whether I had a dog or not. I would assume that she would do the same with her house as anybody would preparing for a safety visit or whatever inspection. These inspections that you're talking about, the potential city inspections you said
Typically you would let the person know that they were coming.
With notice? And then the third, the third part of that is if it's with notice and if it's done by, I would, don't want to call Brandon not competent, but he did kind of say that himself. The, the, it doesn't make sense to, though the vet is competent, the vet is also, there's a difference between me inspecting my own employees and me inspecting some contractors or somebody else's employees. I'm a third party to them and I have no bias, right? And there's obviously bias with a twenty-year relationship with the homeowner. In this case, there's obvious bias there. So I have no doubt in my mind that these dogs are cared for beyond, you know, expectations. But it's just...
Well, you know, if you look at it, you know, the vet also has something at stake. He ought to be on a twenty-year relationship. He's a licensed professional.
Right.
You know, from the state. And I mean, even if, you know, at a minimum, you know, you could always ask for, you know, records, you know, from him. Because I mean, as, you know, Patricia's, you know, said that, you know, there's, you know, she's got digital records going back ten years and it's very easy to sit here and say, you know, if you have something, well, you know, can you show us, you know, can we have access to the last year's records? And that would be a very, very easy thing. So, you know, they have been inspected slash treated or whatever by a licensed professional. I mean, that's why you have licensing by the state.
That was the, that would be the recommendation. When we talked to the state board of animal health and we tried to get them to come out and they said this doesn't require a state license, so we can't do it. They said the person they would normally use is a local vet.
Okay.
A local vet.
A local vet by, by your choice or by?
They didn't specify. They just said a local vet. They, you know, a licensed professional vet would be who they would use.
And I think in other communities, it's typically, you know, it's often a sheriff's deputy.
It typically is. In Stillwater Township, whenever we have an issue about animal stuff, it's the sheriff's deputy that goes out as the first person. And then it's up to him to call in a vet or whoever he, or the person from the Animal Humane Society or whoever he feels is a good resource.
And I would, I would, I would make a comment that while you can clean up a mess, you can't overnight change the health of a dog. You know, I mean, if a dog's sickly and looking sick, he's going to still look sick tomorrow no matter what you do. You know what I mean?
No, I understand.
So, I mean, if they're not underfed or whatever, you know. So I think that's fairly difficult to fake.
I also think that it's really difficult to fake a super unfit home when, if there is
Yeah.
animal urine everywhere that's stained, everything is visible, you'd be able to smell it. So obviously there's maintenance if you can't, I mean, you can't cover that up in a day either.
Right, exactly.
So I get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Again?
Sure, sure.
As a professional myself, I know that my vet is a mandated reporter. If I bring a dog in that has some kind of condition that he thinks it should have come there sooner, he's mandated because he holds a license to report if he thinks there's maybe an abuse or neglected animal.
And who would he report that to?
I think the animal health board.
Okay.
And also Dr. McPlannigan, who's a... And also Dr. McPlannigan, who's a more commercial kennel vet was at my house. And I was not home at the time, but she did walk around. And she said, because I don't have five litters a year, I would not qualify for being, needed to be certified by them.
That's the minimum requirement is five?
Five state, yes.
State.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah. And I have never had five litters, will never have five litters. No interest. So I don't qualify at that level, so.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
The, I'm, I'm not a dog professional, don't claim to be. I don't know how long dogs should be in or out of the kennel. And I think that that's frankly my opinion if I say how much. So my only question, suggestion would be, do we have follow-up inspections? If they're done, are they pop or not? Or and, and are they done by a third party or somebody by our choice that is qualified or not? So that, those are my thoughts.
That makes sense, although I think, I, I think at this point, you know, it would just, it's, well, as they've said, it's complaint basis. So if we got a complaint, it's send the vet out there or, I mean, you suggesting you want to put a recommendation in there for regular inspections? Because that would be different, I think, than what is required of the other kennels.
Yeah, we didn't, we, this is the same condition we had for the Booth kennel, that the city may.
The Booth kennel's off of Scandia?
They were the little dogs.
Yeah, Scandia Trail.
Scandia Trail.
Oh, yeah, I remember that one. Yeah, okay.
They're a bunch of little dogs.
Yeah. Great.
I'd make a motion to approve the application for the intermuse permit for the commercial kennel on parcel eighteen point zero three, two point two, zero two, one point zero 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 one. Anymore.
This is a resolution.
Resolution eleven fourteen seventeen oh three.
There you go.
Do you have a second?
Uh, we have a second to have a discussion, right?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah. Can we, you said we have the right to inspect and we have to notify the homeowner?
We, that's, there's nothing like that in here. It doesn't say we have to notify. It says the city may inspect on an annual basis or more frequently if there are complaints.
I thought you, there was something else.
Anytime when you're accessing private property, you have to notify.
Yeah, you typically would.
Knock on the door and.
Right, well, especially when it's inside the house, right?
Yeah, we don't have to write that verbiage in here. I'm just letting you know that typically would.
So it says we can. The only reason why we would is via complaint.
Right.
And it sounds like we won't have any complaints because the homeowners that are nearby don't even know it exists.
Right, so if suddenly there was a neglect situation going on and there were dogs out barking all the time, I think you can bet the neighbors would complain and.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, or neglect situation inside where you can't hear the dogs. And I don't think they'd be neglect. I'm just saying for.
I think we've looked at, at this every way we can to see, based on some professionals, some licensed professionals looking at it, are the dogs in an okay situation? And, and you have a vet who's known her for a very long time saying in his point of view, she's, she's dealing with the dogs well.
And I don't think there's any, there's no evidence to, for us to say, well, we can't trust his word. I think his words is as good as any other.
License.
License person. Are you okay with that?
I think we should go to a vote.
Okay.
I have a question, I don't know, but so are you, are you taking Brandon's recommendation to go in one more time or not? I, I don't.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, yeah. I appreciate the recommendation. However, I think the vet inspection is sufficient.
I already did that with the vet, yes.
Yeah.
I do too.
Yeah. Okay, all, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That will go to the council next week and they will make the final, the final decision then. Thank you. Uh, all right. So that brings us to our discussions. Wait, what? Uh, all right.
So where we were at was we were going to probably let the minimum lot size and width standard requirements go forward as they are. See if you have a different look at them next time or eventually if you want to have both go forward and get public comment on the option. Is that sort of where you're at?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. How about we send it forward to public comment?
Public comment's a good idea.
On both.
Really do.
Then the next item is some special provisions related to guest cottages, which are in the DNR's model ordinance, but you have never allowed that. Instead, you have just had a general permission for accessory and accessory dwelling. Like the, you know, in our ordinance, we have that option for an accessory dwelling rather than their notion of a guest cottage. Are we okay leaving it as accessory dwelling?
I think for consistency.
Yeah, for, yeah, just leave it the same as what it is everywhere else.
The next section is on controlled access lots and we haven't made any changes to that. And your current standards are the same ones that the DNR has in their model.
Jump back to accessory dwelling units, just with the understanding that if a property owner came in and said I want an accessory dwelling unit, it would be between the house and the road.
Yeah.
Being in the backyard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, yeah, we all understand that, right?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure where Frank is.
We switched the front and back with the.
For lakefront lots.
For lakefront is the lake, yeah.
Yeah, which would be, I know of houses that have cottages that are more near the water, body of water, right?
So the next sort of big section is the one on setbacks.
Which is?
Is six point four.
Six point four. Six point four, I have placement, didn't my numbers get changed? I have placement of height and the design of structures in six point four.
Setbacks is part of that.
So.
Oh, it is, okay.
Right, so the setbacks is part of that section. Your setbacks now, for the most part, are very similar. For recreational lakes, they're, they're the same as the DNR's. Right now on a natural environment lake, you guys require a 200-foot setback, whereas the DNR requires 150 feet for structures. Your setback for septic systems is the same as theirs. And on rivers and streams, the DNR requires 100 and Scandia requires 200 for structures. And you also double the setback for septic system. And so the question to you is, do you want to leave the setbacks as they are now? With the higher setback for structures on natural environment lakes and on streams? Or do you want to make any kind of change?
Well, I'd have to hear a really good argument on any reason to change it. I mean, that's the way it's been. Why would we change it?
I'm a little bit lost of where we're at.
Uh, we're on page, well, on my page, we're on page nineteen.
Yeah?
On the, in that middle section, just above where it says placement and height, there's that little table.
No, you're missing a table? Let's see.
I wrote twenty four one.
Six four one.
This, the setback, this.
Table didn't print out.
Yeah, the table is above. The table is above the.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
It's above. I, it's just in a weird spot.
So the table's in the wrong spot?
Yeah.
It just waited for it on yours.
Mine's like that too.
The one on mine, it's fine.
Oh.
Under six four.
Some of it has to do with the weird track changes function.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes that function, whether, whether it decides it's a change or not, puts it in a weird location.
Yeah, okay.
So stay with the same ones we've gotten now?
That's where I would lean, stay with the same. So we're, we're.
I think that's the same, you know, it's kind of the same issue as a lot size.
Right.
Change the lot size, you'd maybe change the setback or vice versa, but.
Yeah, I suppose you would.
Stay the other.
So for now, we'll leave it the same and if we decide to change the lot sizes, will we do it?
And bring that to public comment. I mean.
Now, the new part of this.
We're going to public comment that.
On all of it, yeah.
The current ordinance has a blanket setback for what are called unclassified water bodies. And that's basically wetlands. And the city has required a 75-foot setback from all wetlands for structures and septic systems. We've had a number of variances lately, and you'll remember them, where people had some not so great quality wetland, but still had to do a 75-foot setback. So we decided to look at what the watershed districts require in the way of buffers, which are not exactly the same as setbacks, but it's a similar thing. You cannot have a structure in a buffer. The council took a look at this as well. And they recommended that we use the watershed district buffer standards as the setback standards from water bodies. And that means a very high quality wetland would have a 100-foot setback for both structures and septic systems. The next quality level down would be 75. The next down from that would be 50 or 75. You'll notice the septic system one, and, and this is partly a county requirement in the county standards, septic systems are supposed to be setback 75 feet from wetlands. So that's why that's 75 or more on the septic system side. But the others, the structure setbacks would vary based on the quality of the wetland. And we would accept the watershed definitions of quality. And that would mean when someone did a wetland delineation, their delineator would have to use the state rating system for wetlands to determine what classification they're in.
I don't see those in here. Are you, are those going to be in the definitions?
We would put those into the definitions if we decide to go with this. I didn't want to type them all in there and then.
That's, no, that's fine. I just didn't, I didn't know what they were.
Now, the, the one sort of thing I would say about this table that isn't accounted for here is the new state buffer law. And the new state buffer law requires at least a 30-foot setback of our buffer from all wetlands. So if we wanted this to be consistent with the state buffer law, that 25 under the managed three rough wetlands would change to a 30. And then the state buffer standards requires a minimum of 50 feet on all public waters. So we would have to add something on this table that would say, if it's a public water wetland, it's at least 50 feet. Or if it's a lake, that's a classified lake, it has to be at least 50.
Well, isn't that stated somewhere else in here?
Yeah.
The watershed district, you know, enforcement of that is charged to either the county or the watershed district.
Yeah, yeah, but if we want to.
Of the buffers and, and.
Of the buffers.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So if we want to be consistent with state rules, I would say that 25 up there would change to a 50.
Yeah.
And then we'd add one more line that says, if the wetland is a public water wetland, then it's a minimum of 50.
Yeah.
And, and if that works for you guys, then we could, this would replace that requirement for the 75-foot on all
Yeah.
wetlands.
I'm, I'm.
Are you guys good with it?
I'm good with that.
What, what, what wetland classification was the Manthee one as an example?
I don't think we know. I don't think we know. They, they, because we didn't have them, we didn't require them to delineate it.
Yeah, probably if you looked at delineation, it was on there.
Oh, really?
Probably out there. My sense is, I know it wasn't a high-quality wetland. I'm not sure if it was a moderate or low.
Yeah.
Can, can I ask about this groundwater-dependent resource?
Yep, that would be like a trout stream. Or a, a lake that is somehow dependent on groundwater, spring fed. The state, and that's based on a Bowser estate standard. They typically groundwater-dependent resources are pretty high-quality resources. And so they would give them a wider buffer, more like the preserve wetland class.
Okay.
So some of the things like Crystal Springs that would probably be a groundwater-dependent resource that would get a bigger buffer.
Yeah, I think this is good with the changes to 30 and then the addition of the public waterway thing.
And if you look on the next page, if it's a stream, that's a groundwater-dependent resource, it's 150. Those would be trout streams typically?
Yeah.
Or it seems it would be capable of.
Actually, ours would be greater because those are already listed, I believe, as tributaries.
Are they? Okay.
If you, if you go up to our classification, uh, we have, hang on.
It's a duplicate.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a coverage issue. Hang on, how do we find it? You know, it may not hurt in here to have something for rivers and streams because we do have that whole section on shoreline classification.
Yeah.
And for rivers and stream classifications. You know, we got tributaries, okay. Falls Creek, Crystal Springs and Gilbertson Creek.
Okay, so.
Those three are in there already. And those are off, those are already classified by the state.
Yeah, and so your requirement now, and you've decided to keep that, is that for tributary rivers and streams, which would include all of those, your minimum setback is 200 feet for structures and 150 for septic systems. That's on that first table.
That was on the previous table, yes.
Six four one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I, I think let's, I mean, are you guys okay with that, with those changes?
I think that would have been very helpful for the last two of them.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, so the next part has that setback averaging thing and we decided to keep that out of it, right?
No revotes.
And then the next section is on decks and we have not changed that from the current ordinance.
Do you want to jump back to setbacks, the, kind of your provision on the next page that you tried to address de minimis?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, thanks for noticing. My brain starts to not even see stuff after a while. So right below the table, the council also requested that there be a provision similar to something called the de minimis requirements in the wetland rules, which says if it's a really, really like postage-stamped type wetland, it, it can be filled or impacted without having to replace it. There's a size and it's like 400 square feet or something like that.
Okay.
So the council asked us to convert that into something similar for this. And so this would be, setbacks shall not be required for wetlands that are 400 square feet in area except for, and, and type three wetlands are pretty good for habitat. Type five wetlands are lakes. So honest to God, we're never going to get a 400-square-foot wetland that's a lake.
Okay.
I'm not even sure that it, I just copied the de minimis language. Eight, eight wetlands are shrub wetlands and they have some specific importance. And we could, setbacks would not be required for wetlands up to 1,000 square feet in area if approved by the city and if the wetland is isolated and determined to have no direct superficial connection to a public water.
Okay.
So, so what do you think about having that kind of a de minimis thing? That if it's really small, even up to 1,000 square feet, the city could decide that it did not need a setback?
See, and where, where this really comes up is if you look at Manthee, where he had his driveway and you took the arc from both 75-foot arcs.
Yeah.
You know, he had, you know, you're trimming off, what, 100 square feet? Well, under the state's wetland regulations, you could have filled 100 square feet where he only impacted 100 square feet of buffer, not even the wetland.
Yeah.
And I think that was the reasoning for, you know, de minimis, that I mean, there are going to be some conditions where you're going to go through the buffer and the impact is going to be small enough where it really isn't going to have an impact.
Yeah, yeah.
And so were you wanting a de minimis for that? For if someone is impacting less than 400 square feet of a larger wetland or?
Of the buffer.
Of the buffer.
Right.
So setbacks shall not be required.
Oh, that's not what this says. This is talking specifically the size of the wetland.
That are very small. So you're wanting to say?
So the way I'm reading this is this is more like a low spot, like as in the ones at, at Manthee were possibly this size, some of them.
And, and they were not types three, four, five, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, they were like puddle, they were puddles that happened to have a little grass growing out of them.
Right.
So, so this would probably still cover that. I mean.
Are you, are you wanting to say that in any situation, somebody could impact up to 400 square feet of a wetland?
I think, no, of, not of the wetland, of the buffer. Well, I think, no, of, not of the wetland, of the buffer. So here's your wetland, seventy-five feet. If they were gonna go through, and geez, I couldn't believe it, seventy-four feet, are you gonna run them through the process for that one foot?
We're not doing buffers here, though. We're doing setbacks.
Or, I mean, for the setback, so you're, you're-
So you're saying that somebody could encroach with a structure up to four-hundred square feet on any wetland?
No.
On any setback.
Not into the wetland.
Which I think you're considering, uh, yeah.
So setback slash buffer.
Encroachment is permitted.
But if it's four-hundred squ- square feet, it would be-
That's kinda, that's, uh-
Well, actually, I think it's even less than that.
Would it just make more sense to say a percentage?
Four-hundred square feet's pretty big, it's pretty big.
You might wanna go down to something like two-hundred square feet.
No, I mean, if you, if you look at it-
Ten by four is pretty big. That's pretty big. Yeah, well, yeah, but that's a lot.
I think the watershed would start objecting if it was one of the more precious resources.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you look at it, this is, you know, from the Bowser regs. If it's a, where you have the numbers three, four, five, and eight, uh, if it's inside the setback zone, it's twenty feet. Outside the building setback zone, it's a hundred feet. They consider de minimis. That's a small amount.
A hundred square feet?
A hundred square feet.
Okay, or twenty square feet?
Or twenty square feet.
Okay, so that's a lot, that's a lot different than four-hundred.
Yes.
So-
And then if it's different types, types one, two, six, or seven, it could be either twenty-four-hundred or twenty-five-hundred square feet. So I mean, you know, when you're looking at it like Manthee for his driveway, probably only impacted, you know-
Yeah, but those, we have to remember that we wouldn't, we wouldn't even be considering seventy-five feet for a setback because it'd be a different zone.
Right, because that would, we'd be considering fifty feet, or maybe even thirty.
Right.
Depending on what the grade, so that wouldn't even, that almost-
But I mean, you know, if you're looking at it, you know, what if it's, you know, if, if you're at thirty, what if it's twenty-nine? You know, that's, you know, twenty-nine, it's only gonna impact, you know, about, you know, the size of one of those tables.
Yeah.
You know, that's why you have de minimis, you know, regulations.
Well, I think that if it's de minimis, if we created de minimis, I really think that we should say, kinda like you say, the variance of nine-point-nine-nine-five-eight.
Yeah, that's five percent.
Five percent.
I think we do percent of the area because if I have a, if I have a wetland that's the size of this room, and then I go out fifty feet from there, or if a wetland that's the size of that podium, and I go fifty feet, and either one of those is a hundred square feet, a hundred square feet of the radius around this podium is gonna be different than a hundred square feet around the radius of this room. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the impact of a hundred square feet would be much less on a big giant wetland
Right.
versus a hundred square feet of something tiny.
Like, like some grass.
The difference, though, that something tiny is gonna be less valuable.
Maybe, maybe not.
Oh, maybe not?
If we're in a spring situation with a little wetland around a spring, that's a groundwater-dependent thing.
Okay, that might be a valuable thing.
Might be a valuable thing.
So, so what are you saying?
I'm just saying that instead of, instead of saying-
So use the number five percent. So you're saying five percent of the setback area? How are you gonna define that?
If you want to affect, um, a wetland area in order for it to be considered de minimis and us to overlook it, it has to be less than-
Five percent of what?
Of the-
Encroachment into the setback.
Into the setback area.
So, you know, okay, if I was gonna administer that, okay?
Okay.
Just with that statement.
Yeah.
If you had a thirty-foot setback?
Yeah.
Five percent of that is one and a half feet?
No, 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 square feet. A percentage of the square feet.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, how, you know, what, you know, where, what might be reasonable if you're talking about that. If it's five percent, and you had a thirty-foot, you know, uh, setback, somebody could, you know, if they went in one and a half feet, five percent of that, that would be-
I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that if you have a, if you have a wetland that's ten feet by ten feet, whatever, you gotta a hundred square feet for the wetland, and then I have to go out-
Say fifty feet.
Say fifty feet, that's fifty feet, so now you gotta basically a, uh, fifty-five, cuz you're getting rid- whatever, you find the, the square foot of a circle, and then you say if it's a thousand square feet, you can only touch five percent of the thousand square feet, which is the whole radius around the wetland.
So that's two-hundred square feet? Is that right?
Five percent of a thousand?
It's twenty.
Twenty.
It's twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty square feet?
Five percent of a thousand is fifty.
Thank you. It's more than twenty. I was like, twenty is not right, but it's not a hundred.
Okay, okay.
So a de minimis from, to allow a little bit of encroachment-
Into the setback.
Into the setback.
Right.
Are you also wanting a de minimis so that a setback would not be required on a tiny wetland?
I would think so.
A tiny, unimportant wetland.
Oh, yeah.
Again, I think that would be quality-based.
Okay, so that would be something in the, um, if it's a managed-three wetland, and it's less than four-hundred square feet, we don't worry about requiring a setback?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah.
And then, so there are two de minimises we're talking about here. One is permitting up to five percent of encroachment on a, a setback area of up to five percent as long as it's not one of the highest-quality ones, or would you even allow that on a high-quality one?
I don't think I would allow it on a high-quality one, cuz I think, I think what we're looking at is that-
On managed-two or three, as long as they're not a groundwater-dependent resource.
Yeah.
But if, if, on a high-quality one, your setback is larger, right?
Yeah.
So kinda takes care of it.
It takes care of itself.
Doesn't it take care of it even if it's a five percent?
Well, but-
I think we just would get real pushback from the watershed districts if we decided to allow encroachment on a high-quality one.
Well, even if it's a, sorry.
Did you hear that, though? She said we'd get pushback from the watershed.
I think we would. I mean, we could run it by them and see what they think, but-
Okay.
I think we'd get some real pushback from them about allowing encroachment on the highest-quality wetlands, whereas we said five percent encroachment on managed-two and three types of up to five percent of the area.
We're still trying to protect the wetlands here, yeah, so.
So I'll write up two different, two different, um, de minimis ones. One for that five percent encroachment, and another for not worrying about having a setback on very small wetlands in, with the quality is the lowest-quality one. Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The deck stuff, the next thing under, underneath the setback averaging, that's in the current ordinance, and it's in the DNR's one. That's how we've decided about whether people can have a little bit of deck encroachment.
Why did we do that?
I, I think it came down to the DNR feeling that it was reasonable for people on a lake shore to have at least a small deck. And, and even people that were not setback far enough could have a small deck on their property.
Sherry, now, one thing there, just, you know, look, one of these administration things you see is item, uh, what does that mean? The structure existed on the date the structure setbacks were established?
Should be like the date the ordinance was adopted.
Okay, but where you have, uh, two-thousand-seven ordinance, how many updates?
And, and that's a question.
And we're changing that, and, and that's why I raised the issue, you know, which set of setbacks would it apply to?
No, and that's, that's fair, but would you wanna say the structure existed on the date this ordinance was adopted?
Well, okay, so let me ask you this question. Say, for instance, the person who we just looked at, that house, say, what if they didn't have that deck on that house on the plan? That they currently have, the porch, the covered patio, and the patio? And they came back, and, and, and they're still setback the same distance? So they're, you know, they've got that ten-foot space between their fifty-foot, the fifty-foot minimum or whatever.
We still don't allow them in the shore-impact zone.
Well, right, right. What I'm saying is, so the house is in its exact current location, so there is room between that space for a deck. Um, and they came back in two years and said, well, can I add a deck? You know, it's gonna be outside of the shore-impact zone.
Instead of the patio, you mean?
No, I, no, I'm saying if, if the patio wasn't on the plan currently.
Oh, oh, I see.
It's just, just as a for instance. So they're building the house today, after the ordinance has already been established. They're already non-conforming, but they're trying to do whatever, they don't, trying to save costs so they don't build a deck at the time. They come back later, they ask for an additional deck. Um, and they're meeting our general requirements. They're outside the shore-impact zone. You know, um, they're, they're building a small-sized deck, all of the things that we generally look at when they do, when we do a variance, but the house is new. I mean, would we not allow them at that point to build that deck? Just because the house is new?
I can't see, I question why we allow to build any new deck, period, closer to than the setback.
In some instances, Dan, you wouldn't hit that because of so many of these that have been approved weren't like between twenty-four and twenty-five percent lot coverage, and the deck would be considered lot coverage.
Yeah.
So that would probably eliminate a lot of those.
Okay.
And I think when that happened in one case, we, what we did was allow the deck outside the shore-impact zone, but needing to meet the same size requirements as here. We treated it as if-
Say that again, the, the size requirements is-
That the deck encroachment could not exceed fifteen percent of the setback from the ordinary high RV, no closer than thirty feet, whichever was more restrictive.
Right.
And that the deck needed to be primarily wood, and it couldn't be roofed.
Okay.
I think we had that same-
Yeah.
We used-
Yeah, we had an issue with somebody who actually had a deck that was non-conforming, who wanted to put a roof on it.
Okay.
And they were told, no, you can't.
You can't.
Okay, okay.
So we've kind of lived with this size and setback restriction, whether it, the building was in place or, or not. So maybe that first one-
Maybe it's not necessary.
We just toss it out and say that any structure, no matter when it was built, we'd consider an option to let him add a deck as long as it was a minimal size, it meant some minimum setbacks, and it wasn't covered or, or made into server room. Part of the deal, Molly Shodin used to always say, the reason you don't allow the covering or screening is that you don't turn it into a room.
Right, right. So-
At the same time, we're allowing a greater encroachment
Yeah.
toward the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why are we doing that?
You don't have to. This is an optional. If you decided to take this off, the DNR would not care. You can be tougher.
I agree with Tom.
Yeah, and, and if they wanted one, they could come and ask for a variance. This would be putting it into ordinance. If we said no to this, they would have to go through the variance process.
And we've seen them before come through variances, and we always look at them and say, it's, you live on a lake, you should have the right to enjoy your lake shore.
Right.
Sitting on a deck with a-
All the time, I'm going back to hold the deal again, that a person that comes in on a new lot, he meets all the requirements, he gotta be a hundred and fifty, a hundred feet from the lake. Somebody else that's in non-conformant already, he can come in and get more non-conformant?
No, it's, it's up to you. If you don't, if you don't rise up, you can take it up. This was a concession. I know this was a concession to all the people who said, if we live on a lake, we should be able to have a deck. But if you don't, if you wanted to go through the variance process for it, that's a fine way to do it, too.
I'm, I'm down with that.
I'm already done with some of that.
I'm, yeah, I'm down with that.
Yep, me too.
Okay, we'll take this section out. Then there are the additional structure setbacks. We've decided to take out that one for unclassified water bodies because we're replacing it with the standards based on quality. So the additional ones are the top-of-bloof, the cemetery one, and the road right-of-way ones. Those are in the current ordinance. I don't know that we see any need to make them bigger.
No, I, that's-
No.
Yeah.
So the DNR's model ordinance, this is interesting, has a maximum structure height in residential districts of twenty-five feet. Yours is currently thirty-five. Do you wanna stay with yours or?
Well, I have a question on that, too. Um, seems to me by definition, there could be a total height of forty-five feet.
Based on the definition, it can be taller?
Yeah, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get up there, 'cause I think we had the picture.
There's the picture, yeah.
I said forty-five feet. No, wait a minute now, that's really getting up there.
We used to have arguments about this. We haven't had for a while, but people used, mostly argued about how the house would loom over everyone else.
You know, how do you measure it, and where do you start, and it's just, uh-
Yeah, at least here, I mean, the nice thing about this revised code is there's a picture.
Yeah.
That is very self-explanatory.
That's the nice thing about this model ordinance. There's lots of pictures.
So in that picture, it could be forty-five feet?
From the ground level?
Ground level up, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That may be why the DNR has changed it to twenty-five.
And I think it reached the top of the building.
No.
There's still gables up there.
Right, it's halfway up.
Yeah, it depends on what the pitch is.
Yeah.
You get a real, go, go steeple and, uh-
I think it is an issue on the small lots, yeah.
The height, you mean?
Especially if you got neighbors. I mean, I can see why the DNR is suggesting twenty-five rather than thirty-five. Cuz I think on the small lake lots, it's a big, and using this definition, it's a big-
But again, this would just be for shoreline, right?
Right, this is just shoreline. The rest of the ordinance would be thirty-five. So that would be the other question, why would we restrict someone in shoreline that we don't restrict in the rest of the city?
Well, I guess the argument would be to save people's view, which is-
That would be the question.
Well, and I look at the properties on Bone Lake, and they're like, the ones on the south side of Bone Lake are on the, I mean, you got a really squatty house if you're, I mean-
To get twenty-five feet?
Right.
So twenty-five feet based on this definition would be, say, ten feet for the basement, which is a pretty tall basement.
Yeah.
And then you would have twenty-five feet to split between two floors.
Plus you could have a little bit more of a gable area.
Yeah, depending on the-
And the majority of the lots probably aren't steep like that, but-
Yeah. So is, so is twelve-and-a-half feet high enough? I mean, if you have, if you have ten-foot ceilings in your, in your main floor, that's pretty high, isn't it? Ten, ten feet's pretty high for, for a main floor.
Yeah, right.
I mean, or a normal, right? It's a nice normal.
No, the definition is really pretty the same, you know, pretty close to the same. Because if you go up here, the definition in our development code would say you would take
Just not consider-
The average from here, and the top could be thirty-five feet.
Yeah, it just sort of shifts where you're in.
It's looking at it differently. So what it says is you take the average height of the grade, which would, let's say, is right here.
Yeah, right.
Then you could go up thirty-five from there. The DNR is saying, go between the high point and the low point of the gable and go down twenty-five.
It kinda works out.
So they, okay, so we go to the top and measure down thirty-five, so, yeah, it's the same.
Roughly the same.
Roughly the same, yeah.
You're not gonna be, have a substantial difference between the two.
There'd probably be the individual house where it would be different, but-
Right, and actually, for, to eliminate confusion, whatever we decide, we should probably change the-
The color.
Change the other so that we have a singular definition.
Yeah.
Would you keep the different height, but just define it differently?
Well, if we-
You're almost talking about the same height, actually.
Because of, because of the two definitions, between the DNR definition and our definition, the heights are essentially the same.
What if we use this definition and put height of Billy being twenty-five there? Wouldn't that solve it?
Yes, yeah. This is from the DNR's code. That's where, this is their measurement of twenty-five.
Right.
From this point here-
From the half point, okay.
Yep.
And our, and that pretty closely matches our current code of thirty-five.
Yes.
Based on the different definition.
Yep.
But they look at it-
So why don't we just leave it the same as it is? That way we don't have to change the development-
They look at it, just don't put this in our shoreline management.
Yeah, just leave it the way that it is.
I mean, you can't have two different definitions.
So instead, use the city's height definition in this ordinance?
Do we have a picture?
No, we could add a picture, no.
So this, if you look at that little thing on the lower right, one and two, measurement taken, the twenty-five feet would start-
At the ten foot.
At the highest adjoining ground level, so it'd be on the high side of the hill.
Right.
Or-
Or ten feet off the ground.
Ten feet off of the low side of the hill.
Yeah.
Whichever's lower.
Yeah, they're assuming a ten-
Whichever's lower, so what, if you are on a steep slope, you have to go off of the-
The low side. The low side.
Lowest one.
This definition is better.
Yes.
To understand.
Yes.
So it would make more sense to go with this, change the height to twenty-five like the DNR says.
Yeah.
And then, and then, then, then go back and change our development code to be the same.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
This is far easier to understand and explain.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go back and change the development code, propose changing the development code to use this height definition. And then use the DNR's twenty-five height in here.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, sorry, so we are changing it for our other code too, not just shoreline.
Yeah, it's better to have the same definition throughout.
I know definition's gonna be the same, height is also gonna be changed.
And is that your thought, is that the development code then should also be a twenty-five foot max wherever now it's?
Right, but it's how you measure it.
Twenty-five based on this.
Essentially gets you to the same place.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't, right now we have a thirty-five foot max, if I have a property on a flat ground. Twenty-five feet up is twenty-five feet up, thirty-five feet up is thirty-five feet up.
But twenty-five feet up is.
If I wanted to build a barn, if I wanted to build a barn, I could build a twenty-five foot barn. Barns are not twenty-five feet tall, they're thirty-five.
Plus some gable up there.
Yeah, plus the gable, so you've got.
Half of the gable.
Half the gable, so you build a barn and you're measuring, you know, if here's your roof line, you're measuring from the midpoint of the roof line.
Okay.
And our current ordinance goes to the top, tippy top of the roof.
Thirty-five to the top.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So even on flat ground, it's virtually the same.
So if you want a taller building, just add a steep roof.
We have those.
Yeah.
And we have one, look at the one down on, uh, down on may uh four and three essentially.
Yeah, I know exactly that.
Those roofs are, those roofs are forty feet tall, cause they're, they're.
Cause they're pointy.
Like sixteen, sixteen, twelve, you're right.
There's no snow that's gonna hang on that roof.
Sorry, they're in our service area still, yeah, we respond to them.
I, I think that what we have was working and just leave it, but that's just my opinion.
I would agree, it was my opinion.
Don't you think this is easier to, don't you think this is easier to understand than the current?
Wasn't me.
With the picture?
Working with the other, we can do a picture on the other one. Between why are we, I mean, rewarding a high gable on a house, what if you don't want high gable on a house?
Well, yeah, you'd be rewarding almost, yeah. If you wanna have your flat roof, you're really limited.
Sure, yeah, if you wanna have a flat roof, then you are limited, yeah. That's a good point, actually.
I'd hate to limit those folks that want flat roofs.
Social.
In Minnesota?
How many flat roof houses?
Looking out for everybody's interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, not.
There, there are people.
Becomes a really bulky building, then it gets thirty-five.
We build them all the time, commercial.
Yeah.
I just think that fifty feet on a, looking at a building is too high.
Not fifty.
Four, it's.
Thirty-five.
Oh, yeah, this definition.
The current, yeah, that's this definition, the current definition goes from the average, the average uh grade. To the very top.
Okay.
Well, if this definition, your, the, your peak, your house could be up at thirty-five, forty-five feet.
Could be, yeah.
I agree, alright.
So just leave it, cause it's the same?
Apparently it doesn't make much difference, so just, just leave it.
So are we back to using the one?
Back to leaving it, I guess.
Well.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, so we're.
Could spend another hour on that one.
We're gonna do the development code definition. In both, and then we're gonna do thirty-five feet and keep it the same as it just now.
Can we get?
Yeah, let's have a picture.
We get a picture.
I like pictures.
Pictures are good, can you draw that?
I can try.
There are so many exceptions in that, it's gonna take about three pages.
I know, that's the hard part, that's the hard part, we'll have to pick a common, a common example to show. Um, so now we are getting close to nine o'clock, we're getting close to a bigger section, do you guys wanna leave off on this?
No, I think we gotta keep going.
Thomas.
I mean, we've been, we've been spent two years on this sucker.
Well, we're getting close, honestly, there's not, the stuff you did tonight is the big stuff. A lot of the other stuff, there's really almost no change.
I feel like that stuff is.
What if we get through seven, seven?
I think the only one that will be of, and and if you can do, I think just look at it quick, is there anything that, most of it is not changing. The only thing that is a sort of discussion piece is the one on the water oriented, oriented accessory structure. The DNR's intent is to permit one water oriented accessory structure on shoreline parcels. And it does not need to comply with the ordinary high water setbacks.
That's what I wanted to talk about.
That's.
I don't think we want boathouses.
Twenty-six.
Or sheds.
That's, that's not been the discussion, the Scandia mode has been.
Build the boathouses.
Think of that as a front yard and not allow accessory buildings in the front yard.
Yeah.
Do you want to take this section out, or do you want to permit one water oriented accessory structure?
I'd vote to take it out.
Wanna take it out, number seven three? That would be consistent with your current ordinance.
I, I, yeah, I guess I would defer to the current ordinance on that.
I would defer to everybody that owns a lake property that has stuff that.
Tom owns lake property. Chris owns lake property, what do you think, boathouses?
Seven point three is a section the DNR permits and you do not allow in your current ordinance. And so the question is, do you wanna insert it in your ordinance or not?
Right now, we don't have any boathouses per se, on Big Marine.
A few old ones.
A few, but.
The Peter and Nora, the next door neighbor.
I'd hate to see a lot more of them, let's put it that way.
And and saunas and everything else, yeah.
You, yeah.
I don't even like sheds down there.
But here's the thing, if we're gonna shove people back to a hundred and fifty feet back from the lake shore. I'm not gonna walk up to the house to get a life jacket, hundred feet.
That's what people need.
Two hundred feet, call it whatever it is, it's not fifty, it's not twenty-five. If we're gonna be pushing them back to wherever, I'd, I think that a small shed up front by the lake is fine to put some paddles. And life jackets and.
So do you wanna permit one water oriented accessory structure up to a hundred square feet, a hundred twenty square feet?
Tom says no.
No.
That's way too big.
Let's bring it up to a vote, let's, let's make it a two by, like, what, how big are those little things that you put up by your road for your kids to sit in?
Two by two or something?
Make it that, all you need is big enough for you to put two Oars in a life jacket.
Two Oars and life jacket, you can't carry two Oars and life jacket down from your garage?
And a middle bucket.
And a middle bucket?
And a middle bucket.
That's, that's like a.
I do think that it's reasonable to have something stored down there.
I think you can store, a, a lot of those folks have like drive-through garages, they have a garage door on the backside of their garage and they can just.
A lot of them do?
Yeah.
A lot.
Well, we don't allow it now, that's, I mean, that's the question, we don't allow it now.
I would defer to what we have now.
The ones on uh, on Big Marine on a hundred and eighty second, they've got the steep hills and most of those people there have some kind of little. Structure or something.
That's reasonable, Tom.
To do that. Uh, where I see that is you're just gonna get people and that they're gonna print it in all kinds of stuff besides storage.
And we have allowed, with a variance, we have allowed a couple of those small structures on lots that had extremely street, steep slopes. Where it really was not practical for someone to carry up and down all the time, but those are the only situations where we've permitted it.
I would go, I'd go along with that.
But that would be a variance.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah.
Alright, the consensus sounds like take out seven point three.
Why am I opposition tonight?
I don't know.
And so.
You don't even know what people are gonna store at the lake and you're talking about.
I have, we have a cabin, we store things there, it's just fine.
So we're now.
It's been Wisconsin.
I think eight point oh is gonna have more discussion about grading and filling, and I know Neil wants to bring up some issues about grading and filling.
So should we stop now?
You know, I got a couple things, let me just come back to, let's kill seven.
Okay.
Uh, in seven point one two. One thing I don't understand, it says, you know, watercraft access roads, you know, ramps approach roads and parking areas may be placed in shore impact zones. How do you screen a water access ramp? How do you screen a bow rack?
A big rubber.
I mean, it's a DNR.
You know, you look at, you know, you, you know, when you read this, I'm trying to read it literally for enforcement, you know. I, I don't.
Erosion control conditions, erosion control is important, yeah.
But how do you, how do you screen it?
Well, if it, if it's a driveway, grass. Right, if you look down, you can't see it.
Should we take the screen, vegetative screening requirement out and just have the?
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah.
And then a lot, you know, there's this whole, next discussion on stairways, lifts and all that. Should something be in there that that's subject to lot coverage?
You can have that if you wish.
Well, isn't it understood, like?
I think it'd be better to be very upfront about it, cause we've had that question before from people about, you know, if I have, I need a stairway and blah, blah, blah. I, I think we should be upfront.
You know, then you start talking about, you know, what's impervious and, you know, cause I mean, if you look at it, if you put, you know, a gra- you know, a gravel. Ramp down to your, you know, your, to your boat to launch it, that's impervious.
Yeah.
You know, stairs down there, that's impervious. And I, you know, I'd rather, as Sherry said, I think it's far cleaner to, if that's what the intent is, to to put it in here and state it.
So you're stating that that ramp would count toward impervious.
Correct.
Coverage.
Correct.
However, however, as it states in this ordinance, don't we want to? Think of that as a better alternative to like a major grading or excavating of some kind? Of course, they can't do that anyways, I guess.
Right.
Alright, so we'll add a statement in that section seven point two that says these structures are considered impervious.
Right.
Alright.
And actually, it's, you know, it'd imply to seven one also. Cause that's placement design of roads, driveways and parking areas, just so that it's explicit.
Yeah.
Sure.
Alright.
There we go.
Alright, it's all for now.
We killed seven.
Killed seven, right. Alright.
We got one more done.
We're getting close, really good, there's a grading and erosion stuff and then there's some PD stuff and then we're great.
Then we're done, okay.
Alright.
Alright, uh, so then the next discussion is um. Oh, yeah.
One of these is a critical item.
Okay.
Well, I think solely, we should definitely adjourn either way.
Yeah, good point, okay, alright, so uh, do we need a motion to table this stuff, or we just, this is just discussion, so we can just ta- table that until the next meeting?
Yep.
Alright, anybody have any items for future agendas?
Move to adjourn.
I take that as a no. Alright, next meeting is December fifth, two thousand seventeen, uh, motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
You second, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye. Alright, I'm drawing my inner Chris Nass.